Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Things all here, we'll get started. Item number four is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for the discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 18th, 2022. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on May 10th, 2022. Item C, approval of plans in the amount of $260,107.38 and payroll expenses of $184,593.41. Item D, approval of ASAP Energy Inc. invoice 458-1671 in an amount not to exceed $33,453.57.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion?
I was hoping to pull item B, the special minutes, if that's possible. We'll separate consideration.
Pull out item B to approve separately. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
I'm staying.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
All right, I will entertain the motion on item B.
I was curious about the wording specifically and how it violated the statute that I talked about. Tim, do we need to strike the record saying that both the mayor and Brian are paid for that position? Or are we allowed to do that?
We're just approving the minutes here. I think we can address whatever discrepancies there are behind. We'll get to item 23 in the agenda.
The item you're discussing, it's just whether these minutes reflect accurately what happened, whether they were done properly or not really before the board. It just doesn't reflect what happened in the last meeting.
Can I add a specific item that was, I guess, asked for clarification on the specific item outlining the reminder of the council's duties in preparation for the meeting that was listed as an agenda item on the special meeting minutes? I didn't necessarily remember that being discussed.
I don't know what you're saying. Was there a specific item that wasn't addressed?
Yes.
So the minutes need to be amended in your opinion?
That's what I'm hoping, yes. Then we can amend specifically to have the question that I asked of the city attorney regarding the hotel tax and its section of, what is it, section 20-171 for his review.
Gentlemen and ladies, I'm not sure where to go with that. That was just a part of the discussions ongoing. I don't know that it's accurately reflected or not accurately reflected in the minutes. It doesn't appear like it would be a necessary item in the minutes.
I thought it was important because it addressed the potential suspension of a tax, and I requested the city attorney to reevaluate that. That's why I wanted to part the minutes.
Well, that would be, I think, in her actual comprehensive minutes, I'm not sure what item number you leave is inaccurate.
Okay. I guess then can I get a copy of the comprehensive minutes to verify that, though? I was not aware of such things existing.
What do you want us to update?
I was hoping to add the question about the hotel tax directed to the board.
Which item number should we add?
So which item number and what needs to be added to the minutes?
All right.
Just the question that he asked, I guess, during that meeting?
I'm asking him to tell me what that is.
All right. I'm hoping to address item... Item four, the presentation of the audit request list, and I'd like to have added near the end the request for an explanation on page 441 and how the general fund has an intra-fund loan balance of $326 and how that intra-fund loan balance could be constituted as a reduction in relation to...
Sorry, Mr. Dowling, I couldn't remember to... I guess I could have thought you had this prepared before you got here if it was an issue.
It certainly was. I guess everybody just cut a little bit behind. Sorry, my apologies. It's Article 5, Section 20-171. I addressed it with Rick earlier, so I was hoping to lean on his experience as a city attorney to help me provide that information. My apologies for my miscalculation. But if we're able to add that to the minutes, I'd appreciate it.
All right, council and council members. You've heard the recommendation for addition to the minutes. We need a second. There's another motion.
All motion that we add the question of the minutes.
All second. I have a motion by Mr. Brooks and a second by Mr. Dowling to approve the minutes of the special meeting on May 10th, 2022 as amended. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item six with reports from staff. I want to, because of the length of our agenda, I want to forego reports this time. We will email out minutes for all these meetings and make sure the council members have access to all that. But I did want to say, with regard to the matters concerning what may need to be corrected from the meeting last Tuesday, that we will add the items, the discussion under our executive session and then action to follow after executive session regarding compensation and some of the other things that may have brought me to question regarding the action we took on Tuesday. Our next item is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If you'd like to make remarks to the council, we'll give you two minutes to approach the podium if you're able. And please, if you do so, state your name. And Randy, you can keep time for us?
Hello, my name is Joe Parsons. I just wanted to come and say thank you to the Alva Fire Department. My family owns the 818 diner here. We had a small fire and they were amazing. They got in there quick and definitely you could tell they have had some top-notch training. They were able to put out the fire without causing any additional water damage and they really, it was a great thing. They could get in there so quick and they did a great job for us. While I'm here, I'd also like to address 827 Maple Street. It is on the corner of Ninth and Maple. It is a property with two houses on it that are abandoned with holes in the roofs and it is causing animals to live in the properties, such as skunks, armadillos and stuff like that, which I believe is not good for anybody. It is also, most of the summer left not mowed and just a danger to the citizens of Alva, especially being right there close to the commercial area and where people are living. I have filed an official complaint at the city hall last week, and Adam Grimsley did call me the day. I filed it and did say that he will be working on that, and I do appreciate his timely response. And it sounds like he is on it, but I just wanted to note that I have made a complaint about that property. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do you need the remarks?
Hi, I'm Mary Waters, and I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about how in Alva there's kind of been a negative wind blowing. And there's a lot of problems that people have been addressing without really offering solutions to. And I just, I think that we should maybe get together a little bit more as citizens and offer solutions rather than just negativity. I know that the utility increase is something that is on the agenda for today, and I think that that is something that will probably affect some of the most vulnerable of our citizens. And just in thinking a little bit about some alternative solutions to create revenue, because I do understand that budget shortfalls are an issue, I do think that there's some other things that we could do to kind of supplement that income. And just, you know, I spent an hour and a half thinking and just within an hour and a half, I came up with several ideas. And I think that there are a lot of people from a lot of different vocations here in Alva, and my ideas stem from my vocation. But if we all kind of work together to come up with ideas, I believe there are a lot of solutions out there. One thing I think that we might be able to do is, we are a contractor and we work a lot with other municipalities, and I think that those other municipalities, they require contractors to register with the city annually and provide insurance and I believe it's a different fee schedule for in-town contractors rather than out-town contractors. And I think that would benefit both citizens, the city, and contractors, regardless of whether or not they're required to pay the fee. It would benefit the citizens because they know that the people that are working for them are insured and are able to do the work that they're doing.
Do you mind if, because of the two-minute limit, do you mind if we visit afterwards or maybe even if you write all those things down?
Yeah, I've got lots of ideas to share.
Take all those suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the presentation from NWSU of the 2022 spring semester Alva incentive scholarship program. Mr. Skeeter Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Try to be brief. I just want to again thank everyone, the citizens of Alva and the city council for your continued support for this scholarship. It's a huge difference. Kids make a decision based on funds, and you all have a big impact on that decision. Before you, you should have a bill for $244,284. If there's any questions about this bill or any other questions about this, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Dr. Janet Cunningham. Any other questions?
Council, any questions?
I had somebody drop off the paper for Northwestern. They were asking about the cap, I guess, that sophomores get on scholarships?
Yes. I know Dr. Cunningham is a much better, she has done a lot of research on that recently, and she can answer any questions on that cap. We at the foundation are outside that cap, so she knows that inside and out.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll be followed by Dr. Janet Cunningham.
Thank you, Skeeter.
Any means.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I will answer any questions that I can on that, but I would like to say also, for the last time in official capacity, thank you all for the support you've given me the last 16 years. It seems like it's been forever, but it seems like it's been about like that also. The big news on campus today is a successor has been named, Dr. Beau Hannaford. He probably would have been here tonight, but his son is in an eighth grade graduation, so his time is being well-spent. As Mr. Burton said, the scholarship money, the Alva incentive money makes so much difference to our recruiting of our freshman class, and we do feel, I'm very encouraged, we feel like we're coming out a little bit of the COVID slump, which every school across the nation has experienced these last couple of years. We're running about 5%, well, 4.5% ahead on head count, and that's overall, and the majority of that is at the Alva campus where we recruit our freshmen, so we're very excited about that. You know, we never count chickens until they come in the fall and show up for classes, but that's a very good sign. We're also running ahead on freshmen, which of course, by far, the majority of them would be at the Alva campus, a few at Woodward and none at Enid, since we don't have freshmen at Enid. Mr. Brooks referenced some information on the cap. We do have a cap that's been in place. It's changed a few times over the years. It's purely a dollars and cents cap with the freshmen. As most universities kind of common practice is no cap on the freshmen, and then as they go into sophomore, juniors, and seniors, there are some caps, because a lot of that is done by fee waivers, which the state allows us to do a percent of budget as a fee waiver. Several years ago, we started moving all of our foundation awards outside of the cap, our specified awards from the foundation, and all of those, I believe, are now out of the cap. Any new scholarships that come in, a donor wants to set up a new scholarship, that we do those non-cap. And actually, we're looking at making some changes in the fall for our fine arts department because of some new endowed funds that they have, I'm looking at those. The cap usually hits students that are extremely high academic achievers and some of our fine art students because they're in so many different groups, so they cap out at a point just because we don't have enough fee waiver dollars to be able to do all of their different awards, but we're looking into that. There was a pretty good article in the student newspaper. As student news reporters, sometimes the facts that they think they have in the paper are maybe not exactly like they are, and the next issue, they allowed me to write a response to that, and so I would encourage you to read both of those, and it explains it really pretty well. So, any other questions on that? Does that answer your question?
So, they also ask if the athletics, if the athletes have the same cap that the rest of the students?
No, athletics, NCAA, we follow NCAA rules for our athletics program. Anyone else? Well, again, thank you. I will miss seeing you all twice a year. Full house tonight, everybody on the council, so that's great. But again, thanks to the citizens of Alva. And really, it's not only the citizens of Alva, because what we count on is a lot of people coming into Alva to shop and spend their dollars here, and then that in general increases that incentive that we're able to offer. And if you've ever been out at Walmart or Alva's Market the week before school or the first week of school, you know that it makes a difference to have those students in this community, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Cunningham.
You bet.
For not only this evening being with us, but also for your many years of service to not just Northwestern, but our entire community. We appreciate you and we wish you well in your retirement.
Yeah. And when I tell everybody I'm not dying or moving away, so hopefully I'll still be able to be of some service as we go through, I believe, in the city of Alva so much. And, you know, actually, Rick and I a long time ago made the decision to move back to Alva because it's such a good place. So, thank you.
And we will be considering that invoice in our economic development authority meeting here in a little bit. Item nine is the presentation of EMS proclamation. I'll read that to you. So, the EMS Week proclamation is to designate the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kelly Parker, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the EMS strong theme, EMS Week Rising to the Challenge. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and I thank you all for everything you do for this community and all of those people that you serve outside of our community as well. We wouldn't be the community we are without you. Thank you very much. We'll have to get a picture with the proclamation here in a little bit.
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion on the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. This did not get emailed out till this afternoon, but what you received is kind of a draft of where we started at our budget retreat almost two months ago. The dollars that still need to be updated in that budget, one is a 19.9% increase in insurance premiums, which is approximately $97,000. Another item that needs to be in there is, and I know this is a topic later on in the agenda, but based on the discussion held at the last open meeting regarding the budget was that there would be a CPI increase for utility rates. And that number is partially included in what was emailed to you today, but based on the resolution, our CPI is to come from the month of May, and we're projecting that at 8.3%.
8.3%.
8.3%. And that would be approximately $313,000 in revenue. The other items that are not yet included in this draft of the budget are the inflation increases for the cost of supplies and maintenance. And so, those are the items that are not included in this proposed budget, but would be prior to council approval. Just to give everybody an understanding of the process that we are bound statutorily to observe, we will have a public hearing regarding the budget at... Okay, you help me out with the timelines?
So, we'll have a public hearing. Public hearing has to be, I didn't pull it up, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see. Generally, it is held at our council meeting prior to, let me start over. It's generally held at our June council meetings when we have our public hearing, and we have to accept the budget, have a budget in place two weeks prior to the end of the fiscal year. And so, there are some publication requirements that we have to also meet as well. And so, by state statute, it has to be in place two weeks prior to the end of the year, which generally happens at our council meeting in June. That would be up to the finance committee to make sure we don't need to have any additional meetings prior to that.
So, I would say, you know, based on what Mary had to contribute earlier, we'll have conversations if there are other revenue considerations that we need to have. We'll get those, you know, considered and through the finance committee for, you know, when we have final recommendation of the budget and when we have the budget hearings. That will all occur pretty rapidly in the next few weeks, so.
Does this reflect the cost of living for the employees?
This reflects a 4% cost of living adjustment for the employees and a step increase for those that qualify.
Approximately, do you have any idea what?
Approximately $300,000 is the cost of that.
Yes.
Yes. So, I would say that, you know, I don't know, Daniel, Randy, you guys have been here about as long as me. This be the, we don't often get this put in front of the council members for consideration or at least to see prior to the June meeting. So, I do appreciate Angelica and her work to get this prepared. I appreciate the finance committee and the council members. It took time to help us outline all of this back in February, but also the department heads that, you know, made sure that we had all the information to consider early on so that we could be at this point in the discussion at this time. You know, we have down here that there is discussion, so I guess if there's any other points of consideration, questions, points of consideration, I'd be willing to spend the next, you know, five minutes hearing what those are, but then I would say that whatever we can't get discussed right here, right now, write them down, get them to the, get them to me. I'll make sure the finance committee gets them addressed and we'll go from there.
I know you said about all the people that did the helping and everything, but even our budget retreats that we have are extremely helpful, that we can kind of go through the different departments and actually see kind of what they need and their expenses are and stuff like that.
What are some of the capital items outlined for projects? Like, what does the rec center have for capital outlay projects outlined?
It's not any different than what we discussed at the budget retreat.
And just to refresh my memory, that's the, I think they said they're going to chip and seal the parking lot and then add for about $100,000 and then about $30,000 to redo the playground equipment? Is that what they were budgeted for? I just didn't see.
Well, and...
What you have with you is the operating budget.
Does not include the capital. It doesn't have the capital outlay included in this time.
Oh, is that not what that line is?
Right, but if you'll notice, there's nothing budgeted in their capital outlay.
Okay.
Well, even at budget retreat, that was kind of the wish list, wasn't it? They had a lot of stuff in there they wanted, but new book or list.
Not as strict. It's like the street is going to have it enough because it...
Like the street is going to have enough, because it is strictly to be used for street repairs, which is classified top line.
Just an odd question, the salaries for the police and the fire department. The DR, which is Budget Direction, is significantly lower than the proposed budget.
Department requested.
Yeah, that's what I assumed.
I'd have to go in and see that specifically, Taylor. One of the things that we made sure that we did for this year as opposed to in years past, or it maybe wasn't done in years past, is making sure that we have enough salaries in there for 24/7 coverage for the appropriate number of officers. I know that when we were looking at the police department budget last year, for for this year, excuse me, that there we felt like there wasn't enough monies allocated there, so just making sure that we have the appropriate amount of staffing to have 24/7 coverage for both of those. But I will take a look at those just to make sure.
I was just curious, what direction we wanted to take those department in, and if it is hiring more? I know that we've talked about that last year was hiring more of what seemed to be a big part of the budget last year, but I don't think we ever expanded departments' numbers like we had talked about getting in the budget cycle, but.
We've been trying to hire open positions, just haven't had the ability to.
This this budget does reflect any open positions, so even if they're unfilled and they've been unfilled for some time, this budget reflects our expenses as if those positions were filled.
And I do not believe that we did that last year to the same extent.
No.
We had a heart increase for a period of time, or that might have been the year before.
That was the year before, but we didn't, as we did this year, no. This is filling any unopened position for the entire year. Last year, I think, when we put the budget together, knowing we would have a specified period of time where there wouldn't be any additional incoming employees.
I guess, I think you kind of talked about the OWRB construction was not necessarily added. I noticed that there's a line item, what is it, under OWRB construction, OWR construction expenditures of last year, it was like $1,700. What, if that's not occurring this year, I just didn't know what that was.
No, so that's a, so that OWRB is a construction fund, is a fund that we use when we build the water towers. You can see we've not had any expenses in there 2019, 2020, current budget, and so that the column that you're looking at is the reestimated actual, and so our accounting software takes any history and projects a number for it, and so I can't change that number.
Yeah, because it's just a historical expense that would never occur again.
Yeah, we don't have anything in that fund, or anything budgeted in that fund.
All right. For the sanitation department, are we, is there going to be capital outlay for polycarts?
Um, that's, I mean, that's what we need to finalize and discuss, what that what those looks like, but what that looks like, excuse me, we haven't made a final decision on that. It's one of the items that was put before council at the budget retreat.
And that's another thing I talked to you about, has been a huge increase in what we were anticipating to what they're going to cost now.
Yes, yes.
They have greatly increased.
And even between this year and last year, the estimates had gone up by about $49,000.
It is safe to say that there are more needs than there are dollars to meet them with, so there will be some things that do not get budgeted, and there will be some things that do, and there will be some people that are happy with it being budgeted, and there will be some people who aren't. It just is what it is. But if you have things that you absolutely believe need to be included in the budget, put those in an email, and we'll make sure that, you know, we've got consideration for all those things moving forward. Don't wait until the last minute, we do have to get this done. So if there are things in there that you think we absolutely have to have, get your emails going. We need to not be last minute on this, because we are going to be in a different staffing situation than what we've been in years past. All right, I will wrap up number 10, and we'll move to number 11, which is discussion and action to approve Resolution Number 2022-003 authorizing a change of rates charged for ambulance transports. If you'll recall, several months ago, we had discussion on this item, and it was determined at that time that we needed to check and see if there were other rate categories for memberships that we needed to pursue. It's been determined that that would not be an appropriate rate for a membership fee, and so we are back with the same resolution as last time for consideration. I entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion through Resolution Number 2022-003 authorizing a change of rates charged for ambulance transports.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mrs. Swallow to approve Resolution Number 2022-003 authorizing a change of rates charged for ambulance transports. Is there any further discussion?
Has the city received any money from the county district yet?
No, not yet. We are waiting on language revisions in the contract. They they can't send us any money until we have a contract in place.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Dalling?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number 12 is discussion and action on Resolution Number 2017-009, Section 3 to pause the scheduled increase in utility rates for fiscal year 2022-2023. Mr. Brooks, this is an agenda item that you brought forward, would you care to speak on it?
I've had a lot of requests, a lot of people that just cannot afford an increase. I mean, if I could permanently put a pause on it, I would, but I think at least for this year, while the way things are going, I think that we should put a pause on it, not put that burden on it. You know, a lot of people in the community that can't afford any more, you know, rates.
As everybody's well aware, any kind of reduction in revenue also comes with a reduction in expenses. Do you have any suggestions?
No.
I entertain a motion.
I'd motion that, I just need to read the ways, where did I hear them? Okay, I'd motion that a pause Resolution Number 2017-009, Section 3, and that to pause the scheduled increase in utility rates for fiscal year 2022 through 2023.
Is there a second?
I'd second.
I think it's important to note that while nobody wants to see an increase, there is definitely a increase in operating costs for the city. We're going to experience the same rates of inflation that all other industries are experiencing as well, and getting this budget to balance in the beginning has been a struggle as we've factored in various increases and things, and putting a pause on that will very likely set us back.
I have a motion from Mr. Brooks and a second from Mr. Dalling to pause, or to... I can't see why you issued that. To pause the scheduled increase in utility rates for fiscal year 2022-2023. Mr. Winters kind of got ahead of himself, but is there any further discussion?
I'd add to his to venture to say that I thought, I know like the street department and I know some of the items, I don't talk about the polycar stuff, but have been talking with Melvin, built the same church stuff, so we've visited and stuff, but there's some stuff that has actually been 100% increase in like the base material. I think it's gone up like $10 a ton that they're going to use out here, concrete's gone up. I mean, the list is great, that cities are affected by the worst than, I mean, I hate to see increases too, but but our infrastructure and taking care of what we've got and what we're going ahead with is paramount to trying to balance stuff and everything, this, I mean, we're forced to pay that the higher costs on that stuff, on oil, chips, and seal and asphalt and stuff like that. It's, he said it's gone up very, we don't, to try to use our street money, it's going to go as hard.
I'd remind, from my understanding, we're actually in a negative job market in Alva, Oklahoma, as one of the two other states in the entire thing, but the jobs that lack filling are low-income jobs. It is excessively hard, and I know this because my ward is one of the poorest wards in this city, and I understand how difficult it is to move here and have that base level of income. Everybody needs water, and you can't live in a house that doesn't. And if you're struggling to provide formula or things for your children, that water utility increases is drastic, because you're right, it has increased for everyone. That 8.3, all goods that you purchase, and so now your utility will also increase by that much. I would say that it's important to consider it, because if there's no greater time to suspend that than there is now, it's the highest. I mean, you could have never predicted how high it would be now, based off of when it was originally instituted, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, it's astronomical, and the science that I say indicates that it probably is not going to get better.
Which is only more pressing that we we cannot take a step back.
And I would say, I would just like to say that I feel we should use caution when we talk about pausing that CPI increase. The CPI increase was put in place for a reason. When I started with the city in 2016, we were losing hundreds of thousands of dollars in our utility authority. We weren't able to provide competitive wages of any kind. We're starting to get to the point where we can begin to keep and retain employees because our wages are and our benefits are getting better. If we don't do the things that we need to do, sometimes those choices are hard. However, we will have infrastructure that we can't repair, we will have no dollars to fix a water leak or a sewer leak that happens. We have infrastructure that is from, you know, 90 to 100 years old in some places, and when we put these rates and this change in place, it was to make sure that we were providing for our future, which is something that we haven't done well in the past, and I feel like, in my opinion, I just feel like we should use caution when we talk about pausing those increases. They're there for a reason, they are hard, and sometimes we have to make hard choices in order to make our city a better place going forward.
Are those increases earmarked for that capital infrastructure?
Does anybody need more information in order to make your decision?
Yeah, from my understanding, we have a very large grant out that's supposed to help support the water infrastructure, is that true?
Well, we we applied for a lot.
We applied for one. Do we know the total amount of funds that's...
We have not received it, but I do know that that grant did not, is not going to, the state did not allocate for the entire state as much as we requested for our city.
All right, that's what, I just didn't know if the idea is if we earmarked that fund specifically for that, because we outlined many issues with our water infrastructure in that.
So we're getting a little off the topic of this agenda item, because we're not going to discuss the grants that are available, we're actually to discuss the pause and the...
I guess I should just relate that.
Does any of the, do any of the council members need more information in order to make a decision?
I think it comes back to your statement, if we get rid of that, then what are we going to let go because we don't have the revenue? We, I mean, something, something else.
Is there, is there new information that that we need to hear? I'm just trying to move us along, guys. I think everybody came into this meeting with an idea of how they were going to vote on this, and nobody is taking it lightly, but I know that it's a it's a big issue, and I think we could, we could sit here and talk with each other back and forth for the next 20 minutes of how conflicted we are with regard to the burden that our people in our community face, along with the inevitable burdens that we face as a municipality to fund the things that our people need. So, I mean, I ask again, is there any information that you guys need in order to make a decision?
The the million and a half that's transferred out of the utility fund, that just goes to fund the general operation, doesn't it?
Please call the vote.
Brooks?
No.
Dalling?
No.
Bear?
I'm good to you.
I am too.
A no vote. I guess, can I retract my statement? Yeah, sorry.
Rick, what do we need?
We're voting yes to pause it, sorry.
All right, well, yes, all right, I thought we were voting to increase there.
Yeah, sorry.
I got off too.
What's the word? We've got no votes on the table. Go ahead and date your vote, if it passes, then you're through, don't have a problem. I mean, if it passes by the majority, it doesn't make any difference what the numbers are.
But, okay, just to clarify, a no is against the motion.
A no is against the motion, pause. Continue the roll call, please.
Continue or start over?
Continue.
Bear?
No.
Bowman?
No.
Martin?
No.
Winters?
No.
Swallow?
No.
Stelling?
No.
All right, would have been the same, okay. I'll reiterate, it's not to say that it was an easy decision to come to, I know it's been on everybody's mind ever since we had the budget retreat back in February. Next item is discussion and action to request an ordinance change to transition the Alva Recreation Complex Board to the Alva Parks and Recreation Commission. This has been discussed in Parks and Buildings Committee, this has been discussed briefly in the Ordinance Review Committee, and it's been discussed with the Alva Recreation Complex Board last, last Wednesday, where they voted unanimously to approve or support a transition from an Alva Recreation Complex Board to an Alva Parks and Recreation Commission. With this change, and we briefly talked about it in council chambers as well, but with this change, they would take on responsibility for operations of all Alva Parks and Recreation venues, whether that's a pool, whether that's a park, whether it's a rec complex, or anything that could be built in the future for the purposes of Parks and Recreation. It would become under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Commission. This agenda item would give direction to draft the ordinance changes that need to be made and proceed in that direction. Is there any discussion?
In the makeup of the committee, will anything change in the transition to the new title?
I would suggest that it, my suggestion would be no. We have people that are dedicated to the recreation complex and the events and activities to support the youth in this committee and community, and so I would suggest that remain the same.
And they acted like they wanted to stay the same.
It just seems that we're setting a new tone and direction for this board, one that it hasn't followed in the past.
That's absolutely correct.
But keeping the same makeup.
The the purpose of this is to set a new tone and to establish a less segmented approach to Parks and Recreation and our community.
And they were willing to do that.
Okay.
They they understand that there's going to be a lot of changes that they have to make as a board. They understood that it's not going to be easy. They also know that it's sharing funds, but they wanted to make sure that we understood that they voted unanimously for this because they believe in the parks and the pool.
No, I guess.
And the ARC.
I would agree, I think it's in aligning with more of the original intent of the tax structure, and I think this brings us in a more lawful place when abeying the law for the tax division, to include those into an adequate system for parks and recreation.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance change to transition the Alva Recreation Complex Board to the Alva Parks and Recreation Commission.
I have a motion by Mrs. Beer, a second by Mrs. Swallow, to transition by ordinance change the Alva Recreation Complex Board to the Alva Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dalling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion and action to approve Resolution Number 2022-004, amending the 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Alva for additional monies from the Department of Libraries. The next few items are some cleanup resolutions regarding budget amendments. This particular item, number 14, is regarding grants received for the library. Those, like I said, those have been received in, in order to... Those, like I said, those have been received, and in order to utilize those, they need to be added to the budget as revenue. And so that's what this item is. Angelica, is there anything to add to that?
No.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-004.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to approve resolution number 2022-004. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item 15 is discussion and action to approve resolution number 2022-005, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Alva for ARPA monies received. This is a, you know, significantly higher number, but it's the same principle, roughly $400,000 that we've received from...
Nope. This is for the library.
Oh, is this a...
Yeah. This is just $8,991.
All right. But it's still ARPA?
It is ARPA, but it is just directly for the library.
Okay. I stand corrected. I stick by Angelica's explanation.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-005.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve resolution 2022-005. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right. Item 16 is discussion and action to approve resolution number 2022-006, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Alva for continuing education.
For the library as well.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2022-006.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to approve resolution number 2022-006. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 17 is discussion and action to approve resolution number 2022-007, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Alva for the donation from the Corey Washburn Foundation. We had accepted a half a million dollar gift from the Washburn family, and we need to spend some money related to the pool. And so we need to get that... That's why this resolution is needed.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-007.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Bowman to approve resolution 2022-007. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks? Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
I'm staying.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 18 is discussion and action to approve resolution number 2022-008, amending the fiscal year 2021-2022 annual budget for the city of Alva for the Alva Regional Airport. We had a combination of things. One, and this is an expense item, this is not revenue. Well, there is a revenue adjustment as well. So we've had an incredible increase in traffic at the airport. Fuel sales are up quite a bit, so there's additional revenues for fuel sales with the airport. In that, the cost of fuel is, is been up, or the expenses for fuel has also been up. So there's the budget amendment for the fuel as well as personnel expenses to manage the airport with the increased traffic. The other item was, oh, six months ago, or is it in there?
It's not on there, so because that happened, the money...
Okay.
It'll be on the next agenda.
It'll be, there will be another one. We'll talk about that next time. So this is just for fuel and personnel?
I'd make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-008.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Stelling to approve resolution number 2022-008. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Okay, item 19 is discussion and action to appoint Heather Bonham, Deputy Clerk, Authorized Agent for the OMRF Retirement Plan. That was you. It was Angelica. With Angelica leaving, we need some, an authorized agent for the retirement plan. And Heather is familiar with all of this, and that's why that's the recommendation.
And prior to me being City Manager, I would think I was named as Authorized Agent. And in years past, it's always been our payroll clerk that has always been Authorized Agent. We just never changed it when I moved to City Manager because it wasn't necessary.
I'd make a motion to appoint Heather Bonham, Deputy Clerk, Authorized Agent for the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund Retirement Plan.
I'd second.
Was that you telling?
Yes.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Dowling to authorize Heather Bonham, Deputy Clerk, as our agent for the OMRF Retirement Plan. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 20 is discussion and action on tourism tax commission, appointment of Melinda Barton to the Alva Arena Authority. The governing documents for the Arena Authority call for the tourism tax to have a representative on that authority, and their selection is Melinda Barton. And that's their recommendation, so that's, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Melinda Barton to the Alva Arena Authority.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Bowman to appoint Melinda Barton from the Tourism Tax Commission to the Alva Arena Authority. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
I'm sorry, can you tell me again who's the executive?
Uh, Winters and Bowman.
Okay, thank you.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstaying.
Brooks?
Upstaying.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item 21 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to A 25 OS 307B1 to discuss the employment, hiring, and appointment of city business manager; B, the employment of an interim city attorney; and C, 25 OS 307B2 to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma. Is there a motion?
I'll motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask council members, legal counsel, clerk. I do want to do that. Ready? Item number 23 is action on the employment, hiring, and appointment of the city business manager. What action do we have? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the council's prior action on May 10, 2022, which authorized Kelly Parker to provide services as an interim operations manager only insofar as rescinding the $750 monthly stipend to be paid, hereby withdrawing the stipend in its entirety.
A second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Beer to rescind the May 10 decision to pay the mayor $750 stipend and the rest of what Daniel said. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Staying.
Swallow?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Item number 24 is action on the employment of an interim city attorney.
I'll make a motion to appoint, or to hire Drew Cunningham as the interim city manager for a period not to exceed three months at a rate negotiated by the city manager.
A second.
Yep, okay.
Hi, what did I say?
You said manager.
Uh, city attorney?
City attorney, though you said that it's negotiated by the...
Negotiated by the...
The mayor.
Mayor, yes, sorry.
Your two notes got mixed up.
They did.
Let me restate the motion is to authorize the mayor to negotiate a three-month interim city attorney agreement with Drew Cunningham.
Correct, starting July.
Starting July 1st.
Yes.
That's the motion?
Yes.
By Mr. Winters, second by Mrs. Beer. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Upstaying.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. And item number 25, there is no action on contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782. 26 is new business. We do not have any business, to my knowledge, that meets the requirements for new business. And 27, remarks and increase by council members. All right. 28, we are adjourned, and we will open the Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 18, 2022. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $103,076.81 and payroll expenses of $47,717.56. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, with a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right. Item 5 is to adjourn. We will adjourn the Utility Authority and open the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 18, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $55,333.04 and payroll expenses of $14,341.69. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, with a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion and action to approve the payment of NWSU Foundation's invoice for the 2022 Spring Semester Scholarship in an amount not to exceed $244,284. The invoice is in your packet. You heard the remarks from Mr. Bird and Dr. Cunningham. We had opportunity to ask questions at that time. Is there any further discussion before we hear a motion? I'd entertain a motion.
I do, to approve the payment of NWSU Foundation invoice for the 2022 Spring Semester Scholarships in an amount not to exceed $244,284.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the Northwestern Oklahoma State University Foundation invoice for 2022 Spring Semester Scholarships in an amount not to exceed $244,284. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Staying.
Brooks?
No.
All right.
Martin?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.